............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
They discussed that years ago. And I think that went-
So makes sense that we need to clear it through the county?
Generally, when Alan Gistl's request ends up going to the county, then he gets a recommendation from them.
That's all been done. That's all the point.
I'd like to see if we can get the paperwork, get all of the paperwork.
Because the 30 mile an hour sign is right there on the sharp end. It's oblivious. You can't.
We have the signs, so we can put two more on. One by Elm Street, July 11th, shortly in. And then down by the credit union. If the town will let us put that in.
Thank you.
All right. A couple of weeks ago, I had the honor of going to a ceremony to congratulate one of our young men in making Eagle Scout. I wasn't aware at the time that there were two honorees. I went and read the board resolution. And I felt kind of bad because Mr. Prenier was also being honored. He's in the same troop. He just lives in a different town.
Yeah, a little more.
Okay. But I felt that he was- I thought it was necessary. I thought it was a good point for the village board to honor Mr. Prenier as well. For his accomplishment, for his commitment, for his stay with it. That is a word. And I asked that another resolution of congratulations be drawn up. And I'd like to present this to Mr. Prenier. I'll read it into the record as a board. I'll ask for a resolution to approve. And I would like to present this to Mr. Prenier. "It's a resolution of congratulations, Joshua Robert Prenier. Whereas Joshua Robert Prenier has given his time and energy to achieving his goal of earning the title of Eagle Scout through Boy Scout Troop Number 41. And whereas Joshua has completed the requirements of and having been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review. And whereas Joshua is found worthy of Eagle Scout on April 16, 2013. And whereas an Eagle Scout Court of Honor was held on Saturday, July 27, 2013, at time after time reception honoring this achievement. Now therefore be resolved, this resolution of congratulations to Joshua Robert Prenier is offered by Mayor Gregory Martin. And I need a resolution, please, to pass this resolution."
Follows.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by trustees Amy Garrick, Jim Frederick, Kim Trombley, and Tom Trombley. And are we all in unanimous favor here? All right, any opposed? Having been adopted by unanimous affirmative vote by the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees, this resolution is to be spread upon the minutes of the regular board meeting held on the 12th day of August in the year 2013. Signed by myself. Okay. I'm going to say you're more than welcome. Okay, thank you. Other report from Mr. Katrov?
I could've typed this out in January and just give you a different one each month. Basically, it's the same issues over and over and over again. Just keep dealing with them. Grass burning in the village, going board issues, notice of violation for different things, a couple trips to water town. About it. My point of view, not even that for a month. Lot of different things going on. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, I hope that the trips to water town were productive.
I think they are.
I think we're on the cusp of being awarded some funds, significant funds to the tune of about $2 million.
Yeah, we're finally getting the years. I think there are some important people, some of the bigger players in this, you know, where in the past we didn't seem to get too much attention, but I figure we're for real now.
We spent today with one of the economic development members, and she was kind enough to walk us through our application. Kind of give us some ideas about what we need to strengthen and what we need to change, or we need to approach things a bit differently. The engineers were there, mine kind of was attending. And it was, I thought it was very productive. All worth the seat time begging forth.
Have you got a response on the fire violation, where the outside water being shut down at Parkett Drive?
No, I haven't. I sent them my notice of violation last week, I believe. And I haven't gotten anything from them yet. I was going to check on it.
So the thing is totally shut down, so if there's a fire there, there's no source to operate the sprinklers?
Correct.
And so on a case like this, how much time do we give someone like that? Because we're dealing with people's lives here.
Well, it's a notice of violation. It's up to them to come back with me with a plan of what they're going to do, if they're going to fix it, and a timeline. I talked to a couple of people that have been involved with them and looking at the issue. And that's where I formed my opinion that basically they're not taking this seriously. So that's why I issued the notice of violation. Now, they have, I mean, I put on there, I need a response immediately. I don't know if they make that decision here, if it comes from somewhere else, but somebody's going to come up with a plan pretty soon, otherwise, you know, I mean, the court would be the next.
Yeah, this is what I asked. This is next step.
Yeah. Because, you know, at the end of the day, I could pull the occupancy permit from that and basically pull that place down. There's people working in there in an unsafe environment. There's a fire in there, you know. I mean, everybody, "Oh, okay, there's a door," but that's not the point. There's a sprinkler system, and it's got to be operational. So that's the endgame.
So what is your plan, wait and see here?
Well, I want to talk to them on Wednesday when I'm back here.
Okay.
And see if I can get a different person to talk to, or somebody with, you know, with knowledge as to what they're going to go. Then, whatever they tell me, I'm going to verify it, because I've had some stories told to me before.
Right. Yeah, and that's my concern. They've strung you along on this, you know, based on the letter, and these are people's lives. And we've had enough fires in this county and loss of life, but we're not going to mess with that.
Aren't they going to have somebody look at that later?
Well, that's what they told me earlier in the year when I was first aware of the problem. And I called the company that did look at it, and they did tell me. But since then, the company that was going to do the work has gone out of business. So I didn't like the answer I got. I got the impression that, you know, it would be bothering you for it. And sort of, you know, it's perfect. That's why I did do it.
Maybe we need to push them a bit further.
Well, that's my intent.
Okay. Any other discussion to make? I'm going to go back to a different area and ask for your opinion. A couple other cases to go and talk about today. All right. Music in the park on August 4th was a resounding success. I'd like to thank Trustee Jim Frederick for excellent work organizing this great event. I'm sure she'll have another say there. Village Fest will be held this Saturday, August 17th, from noon to four. Be lots of interesting displays available. Champlain's finest, Fire Department, and DMS. Border Patrol will again participate with the helicopter coming in to land at noon. Music will again be provided by Mr. Katrov. A little karaoke there for everyone.
Ah.
And of course, ice cream donated by Stuart's will be available for all to enjoy. Also on Saturday at 11 o'clock in the morning, there will be a special dedication honoring Noradia Moore, son of Champlain founder Pliny Moore, and a noted abolitionist who worked with the Underground Railroad here in the North Country, taking slaves into Canada, providing for their freedom. All are invited to attend at 11 a.m. Saturday, 17th of August, in front of St. Mary's Church. Extensive work continues at the wastewater plant to change the diaphragm air filters. These irrigation tanks have never been drained, and sediment, and the sediment removed in the past. This is a major, major time-consuming event. Thanks to Mike and the DPW crew, and Morrisonville Septic, who is assisting the village on this project. Simply, this project has turned out to be much more extensive than we had anticipated. That's all I have. Trustee Garrick?
Two months in a row. All right. Hopefully, we're going to have a date for the playground soon. We have a lot of things taken care of in the village that are our priority over the playground, so-
Let's just talk a bit about that.
Yes.
Talk to Mike about it maybe next week before we move to St. Mary's, and digging out some of those posts to, you know, what the depth is. But this wastewater project has kind of thrown us for a loop.
Right. And so obviously, those are priority over playground. But things are moving forward, and we will be moving equipment from St. Mary's as well as from Champlain Elementary. We're taking the whole section of the play equipment from Champlain Elementary School. So we'll be moving that in pieces, which is going to be very interesting. So lots of colored paint is going to be needed to dot the ends of the equipment as we take it apart, so that we put the right colors back together again. But it's all laid out with lots of extra room, which is kind of exciting. And once it's done, you know, it'll be a great project. And, you know, maybe we'll have to wait till the fall, which is fine. The ground doesn't freeze till January anyway, so we'll have time.
Maybe we're depending on the weather here, this is what we're-
Yes. And in the front section, where you see sort of a little bit of broken up parking area there, we are going to blacktop that, and we'll put in hoops. So it'll be a basketball court, and then the winter will convert it to an ice rink. The sidewalk behind it will remain in place, and the light fixture right there will light it, which will be really awesome. So I'm kind of excited about it. It's getting there. And we'll continue to keep writing grass for more money as we add. We're going to need to do some fixing up to the Champlain Elementary equipment. As it stands now, we're placing pieces here and there. We've got plenty of funds to do the replacement parts, to get them up to safety standards. We would most likely have to reseal the entire wooded equipment over again to make sure that we're up to code. And did you hear back on the grass? Can we keep just grass as our under- that is really-
It's the same here.
Yeah, the playground code, grass is an approved-
Surface.
-surface. So my thought is to keep the grass. I mean, that's the less damage we could do to the river if there were to be a flood. Because if there's a flood, all those rocks that are going to cost a fortune, or all those rubber things are going to go right into our river, and I'm not really into polluting it. So, and that would be just-
Rust.
-flushing the money down the toilets. So, and the grass, the ground there is gray, so you've got nice, plenty of sun, so we'll be able to keep it up. So I'm excited about that. Village Fest this weekend. Please, everybody come. Should be a good time. There's lots of things throughout the whole community, not just in the village, as well as townwide garage sale. For those of you who are listening that are garage sellers, woo-hoo, big event. Bring your cash.
You having a sale?
No. Oh, my husband thinks he's going to have a sale. He's trying to get me to empty out the house this week, but I don't have time to do that, so. Anyway, so it should be a good weekend for everybody up here in Champlain, so I hope to see you here. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I've got a question on Prenier for-
Sure.
On the moving sections, are we doing this family, or are we going to try to move in larger sections?
Well, you're going to have to, because it's all connected.
Yeah.
This whole one big area, which is-
But trees-
Because I've got an offer from somebody that provided flatbed and a torque disc.
So I'd be able to-
So just need to let me know if that would be helpful, or-
Yeah, because that one section alone is 63 by 70.
Right.
That houses everything. And every single piece is connected to another piece in some manner.
But if it breaks down and-
Yeah, so like the back section where you've got the slide and the tunnel that goes through, that section can stay together. Right. If you've got a flatbed, that'd be great. Then that next section has got that long chain bridge that you have to go across.
There.
So it probably can break into three sections if you're flatbedding it.
Scrub it through the legs and cement, each one of those courses.
Yeah, we're going to do that, too. Yeah, we're going to start creating a queue.
But I think if you dig around it, dig through the stone, dig through the dirt down to the top of the cement, which is probably three feet or so, I think you can pull it in.
I don't think Chris will probably, I don't know, probably go next week to want to get that equipped, but if he can't pull it up, I don't know if he'll do it on St. Mary's. There'll be kids hanging around.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, he's talking about the ten dollar.
I talked to him last week, and I told him possibly the end of this week or maybe next week, so he's got to go in with the stone. Maybe we can do it all, and we'll do it out in St. John's.
Well, give me a week's time, so I can sort of line it up and figure it out.
You've got to have a place to put it. You don't want to be leaving it laying around.
Put it hours in the way.
Yeah.
We, all the works out, you have to, just to get it out of there.
That's right.
Yep.
What do you want to do?
I don't know.
Mike, do you have any idea when the county is coming back to the work table?
So he wrote to John. He told me to talk. I mean, the exact date, I think they're still working on theirs. I know during that, we've dig still in front of the new air stove, and the trench put there, more of the ice, because water's more across. So we won't do that same time. I don't have the exact date. Depends on his schedule to the letter. He's going to be back this fall. I think he's got some work, thinks he has more to do for Alan, too. He said he had to come back for Alan this fall, so at the same time, if he, with him, all together.
Well, that's something you can have that stripped down. I mean, it's already been blacked out. One of the questions was, is it very gamey here with the resort from the water? I spoke with Ron Brown, the Assistant Administrator for the County, who's insured with this supply of properties. He said the village owns it, and on there it says recreational uses. It's already been blacked out. It's already been, you know, used as a parking area. I don't see where it's going to be. The problem is for us to go blacked out. I mean, going blacked out on down to there, and use it for our basketball court, for skating in the fall. You know, I think we can do that without any issues.
The only concern with the court being there, and that's our only option because it already is existing, is a bad pass going into the road.
Yeah.
Which is a fear, I'm concerned.
Yeah. I feel in towards a little bit of a channel.
Yeah, we'd love to look at something like that.
I'm sure.
And have to be very high.
Eight, seven. Three, six, nine. I'd say eight sounds reasonable, but still to consider.
So I can look for more money on that, too, specifically. But in the meantime, we could get it put in and-
Somewhere in the near to well future here, we've got to sit down as a group and talk about purchasing a fence for the water tank. We can get an estimate for the water tank, and get an estimate for the other three, so. Can you do a couple of other things to bring up?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, thank you.
I have two playground questions first. I want to say one question. Is insurance for some of the old equipment, has that been looked into? Because I know some of the older equipment is insured because it's not recommended.
All the equipment we have are up to code and recommended. Everything that we're taking.
We've looked into the insurance, don't we?
Well, you've got to get insurance for your children's, you know, or anything that has a depression.
Okay.
The pension will be moved in to put in.
Okay. And I had a call today from a resident who was wondering about the chips, tires from the surface. But, so the concern is that they, if a flood, they could go into the river.
Right.
For the small children.
Right.
Well, yeah, it's not like the flood. But I need, I need to get back to her on that. Yeah.
Grass is fine.
Yeah.
Over time, if that comes a problem, it's-
Then we can address it at that stage.
We can address it.
Look for more money for that specifically.
Like, turn the patches and what they're probably, a few of them there.
Right. There's a pretty dry section there. It's well drained.
Yeah.
Except when we have a flood, you know. That has only occurred twice a night in here.
When we came or when we broke chips.
Right. Massive one. That's what I'm saying.
Is it a step ladder, or just you're going to swing?
Yeah. Those rubber chips are just going to be, you know, you're going to have to warn footprints like you do even with the chips, even with the stones. You've got, it's worn right down to the ground where their feet drag by the slide, you know, and the swings, you know. Those two areas are always well loved, and there's not much we're going to do to change that.
Worked well, it's good.
It's within our yards, right?
There you go.
Yep.
So I want to thank Kathy Coates for organizing that wonderful concert. It was about 75 people who came, and it was a really good time. And of course, the weather cooperated. I think it was much better than that. I also met with Angelina Tom Gay, who is the mother of Ashley also. And we're working on organizing a run in her memory in September or early October. And I think we're going to use the Northeastern Run, Cross Country course. We really don't want to run on roads. So I'll be meeting with her again soon. The Fun Run and Walk is this Saturday before the Village Fest. Registration is at 7:30 a.m. The Run's going to run, Walk's going to start at 8 a.m. First 20 people can get three t-shirts. And I need help, so I hope some people can come help. I have really, really spiffy vests that are orange that say "Race Official." And you could don one of these, and I could put you in a position on the road to stop the traffic and tell the runners where to turn. It would be an awesome job for anybody, once in a while.
May I help you with registration?
You may help with registration, but that will end, and then I'm going to send you up to a turnaround point, too.
Okay.
What time's registration?
7:30. And also, just on that same note about that run, is that Kenny's donated 10 cases of water, right, Manita?
Mm-hmm.
So I want to, and numerous other things, too, but I want to thank them for that. And I think that's it.
Questions? Trustee Garrick?
First, I'd like to congratulate Donna. As sorry as we are to see her leaving her position with the village, I wish her the very best as she moves on to the next chapter of her life, and I hope she enjoys her retirement. I also wanted to thank Donna and Manita for the quick turnaround they did on the personnel policy. Everyone's been given a copy. They did a great job with highlighting the deletions, highlighting the additions or changes to that policy. So I know Mayor wanted it for this meeting, so I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it, but-
We'll have some discussion on that in a minute.
Okay, good. And, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Anything else?
Well, I didn't have the report. You get-
Did I? I'm sorry.
I really made the report.
Also, you're going to have to-
I, I'm sorry. I kind of jumped.
No, Bill, Mayor Martin did that. It's okay.
Yeah, it was fine.
Are we going to, are we going to test on the-
Yes, yes, definitely. I have it. Just going to make sure it's all set.
For sure.
Uh, report from the clerk treasurer, please?
Everyone has their consent reports for July.
That's very normal. We're only a couple of months into the, into the year, but I think our, I think our budget is going quite well. A couple of areas, just to forewarn you, we're going to run a deficit in the wastewater area. We hauled up, how many loads?
10.
Hauled up 10 loads.
How many are you saying? Is it raining, is it cleaning down there?
Well, we need to take it out.
What? Need a place to put what they're taking out?
They have the tanks, you need a place to put it. So one bed was completely full from the bottom, and we had to empty it, and they came off, and it fucked up in the on the-
This is the first time we've shipped sludge to Malone in almost a year, I think. So it's going to be quite expensive, but the space is necessary, of course, for the second half of this job. And kind of clean up that one, only one, so.
We'll get one to handle it, because that one's a huge.
So I see a purchase for risers. What is that down to wastewater? It's under wastewater count. Prescott Everett, risers for $348.90.
Under wastewater risers? That was a manway ring. We had some of their valve kits are filling with water, and we had to easily seal them. Where the valves are for tanks, separation tanks, irrigation tanks.
Okay.
So Prescott and Everett, no?
No.
Neither connections.
Well, it's $457, I would say.
$348.90.
$348.90, no. That should be on your streets.
Okay. I'm under a G.
Those are for the risers. I didn't put them on board on there. I apologize.
But it has to.
Those are risers for the streets we pave, the sewer manways.
Yes, it sure does. It does.
They're charged for sewer. But it's not for the wastewater plants. It was on the, it was on the streets, we're just charged for sewer, for the sewer areas.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And I did order some seals, but they haven't done it yet.
It's changing, I'm trying to see similar instructions.
If you think they're healthy, please.
Are you, are you finished with your report? Do you have a motion to approve the warrant?
We have one invoice. We have one invoice to add. It's the invoice for Finney's, for the t-shirts for the Fun Run, in the amount of $220.
$220?
Yeah.
What's that going to come out of?
79.89.4.
That's going to show?
Yes.
Now, any motion to approve the warrant? So Mike, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can carry on with our discussions. I'd like to comment on the second page under the general fund, number seventy-seven, no, yes, number seventy-seven, GNS Steel. Mike, you could provide yourself, you know, you'd steal, steal great, that's an angle iron and managed to work up a, a contraption that goes on the front of the footer. That's sip-selp, Pepsi. So we don't have to go out and buy it, you know, and make it here ourselves and kind of skip that, skip that cost.
I think we picked up the show which we just feel if you're onto the side off.
Where's the side back?
Huh?
Where's the side back?
Sure, it's down the mile.
How about the dirty way?
Well, we just, I hear like next year he hasn't.
Mike, could I ask that on the front page here under the general fund, number sixty-nine, Champlain Peterbilt Inspector, that's what, that's the stuff.
That was, yes, we had the, we had the inspector with Peterbilt and also we bought a, I mean, that's similar, it was like.
The toggle switch?
Toggle switch is for heated, heated wipers was broken inside, it's a positive toggle switch. So there's, so there's. Yes. He didn't, he didn't, he didn't, he broke off and it's a positive switch, you know, maybe greater. I don't know why I got broken, actually. Maybe it's due, or it was something. You know, people are like, like, do this, but, knock on fire at the L.A.
radios are working fine?
Yeah.
Long time coming. Any other questions on the warrant?
I got one for Anita, just so I could be educated. Eight thirteen twenty-five four, the treasurer contract though. It just stood out to me, very new, this year, level fifty-eight percent of it and I'm sure you're gonna.
Where's that?
Treasurer, contract though. Eight for two twenty-five point four.
Twenty-four, pretty sure.
Yeah, wait for three.
Oh, Amy asked me about that one. It's our tax program comes out of there, our, we pay county for our taxes. That's, that's seventy, yeah. It's just a one-time charge, but it comes out at the beginning of the year.
Okay. I figured something about.
There was two charges, there was some hundred million, something each. They're just one-time charges.
Notice on the third page of the general fund, I sent Mr. Pulsar down to buy a pair of boots. The boots that he had on, ketno grip, I was just sharing nothing on him. I was afraid that it would be a slip hazard, you know, where he was working. I know it's before, I know it's before his, his probationary period is up.
It's also over the amount, we have approved it in our policy.
Raise the amount, go ahead and make it.
When did we raise that?
That was part of the negotiations.
So we.
So that's why it's there and we'll still be built for, have a better shot. Before we can put it down on that wastewater plant. Any other discussion on the warrant? Your motion approved? You have a second? Rule call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McSedgey.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
I have the report superintendent.
Well, we've been busy this month. We did the general mowing, trimming, brush cutting around wastewater plant. We had quite a few trees that were hanging over and actually majoring the fence. We still have one more, a cop, that Carl Smith's gonna load us a bucket truck for. General maintenance, we've been servicing the vehicles here, one ton's been serviced. Sewer jetter, four pickup, I can sell them, the battery is well equipped, one day on us. Installation of the water meter on the main distribution has been completed. We are gonna need a chart recorder and hack back the traceability. I did put a yield request here for it, I don't know if that's gonna be towards the new water.
Mike, do you remember if that's included in the wastewater project?
No, I stuffed my head in a little. So if not, sometime we'll have to look into it, it doesn't have to be analogous. Maybe sometime.
What is it?
If you need to chart it.
Every time, every time the pump runs, it gives you a double pin chart recorder, it records how many gallons and when the pump hours, you know, when peak hour, when it runs and what it is.
And why do we have to have it? Is this something for code or just to keep track of what?
The only way they're, all they're can keep track of right now is total gallons, they write it down every day. This year's monitored all the time, so we have traceability, exactly how many gallons we want to, how many pump hours we pump. This way it's recorded, we have a reliable source, you know, ball by, traceability.
For leak, detecting leaks.
You have also peaks at a certain time, you know, you have a leak starting at, you know, this time. The only thing we're doing now is the total, every day when we go down, we check it, we subtract, you know, what it was before and we write the total. There's no, other than us writing, you know, doing subtraction there. There's no real way to, to check. This way here, you have a subject monitor all the time, you have chart paper, you can keep.
We've had one down there.
Yes, there's one there and it's, no, but.
It's corroded. And I think that kind of goes along, like you said, with something that I think we're all realizing that there was, there has been a lot of things, in equipment that has been ignored over the years and now it's catching up to us. And that's why we seem to have a bit more equipment requisitions and requests than we have in the past. With this, with this chart, we were asking Mike if this was included in the proposed water project. If it is, I think the village can seek reimbursement for this.
I thought that there was some equipment that was part of the project for the water plant down there.
Yeah.
I can remember a flow meter or something from a well to distribution tank and that, that may be part of that too.
I think.
I know it was talked about.
Yeah, I think it was talked about, I think it may be.
I think we can get reimbursed for that, through that project, or when that project is done.
There is POs for it. One company is more than the other, I would say, it's a hundred and eighty dollars difference, but with that company, if we have an issue, they can come right here and fix it. And the power surge is invisible, you had before there, electronic part, there's a difference, it's better than charred policy.
Should we table, should we check on that?
Yeah, I'd like to see this table and check with the engineers and see what the.
I know it was.
Here.
It was a Greek construction.
Yeah, it will be, it's gonna be something for down the road, but.
It's a safety device.
Ash line drive lift station, we had a power failure, the trees were rubbing on the lines. At some point, they need to replace the meter can and rewire. It was a good time to do it. It's, maybe one wire has, had burned off previously. It's only one temp pump there and at some time they had switched every old, so I think at one length it burnt, I don't know how long, because I was told they'd move the breakers to have power, well, the second one burnt. So at some point we'll have to rewire that, it's not a big deal. Cut shoulders on Al Street, River, River Street, adjusted the grates to try to get the water to run off the roadways. I mentioned I built a screen for screening the black dirt, stuff cut off the shoulders, trying to save us some money. Put, put together a water meter for pool credits this year. This will be giving, giving accurate reading to customers, the way water is going to the pool only, they're not having us come read it and then five days later, read it again and everything they use, we have to treat. This way here, if they use this meter, have a logbook, pick the reading before and after, they'll get a, they'll get a credit, you know, for what's just put in your pool, since it takes longer than we are gonna use. Yes, you are, it's more accurate.
That's right.
Right. We had to do a, take a shut off up on Little Street, a fellow, I think he was in a version home, we went to shut the water off, rod just robed it off in the ground, took care of that, installed a couple of water meters, one for Martin on the end of Meadow Lane, or Moore Street rather, and Richard Deese's apartment house, made the change. Painting's complete on Finley, building on Chestnut Street, we put shoulders on, we gravel, we put some black dirt. Our unleaded gas tank out back here, we're taking a dig, everybody's painted, labeled it. We removed the plow and major truck, we've been using that for now, we're gonna try to hold off getting another dump truck, try to use what we have and get by with the one we have. If we run into trouble, I don't know if we put the plow lane on, that'll have to see what we can do, borrow one or hopefully we won't be the next one, but we'll hold off for that for now. We started painting the fire hydrants throughout the village, they're not complete, but that's one of those filling projects, we're in between. Little Street, every year, well, every year, last year, I guess it's been going for some time, there's an awful dip in the road, the road heaves and where the cover stays there, we take that out, it was all crushed over, they filled and crushed over, a lot of the grain out there, we also need, so we took the covers, a little gravel in there, that's taken care of. All the sludge is hollowed out of the drying bags. That was, so the last load today. Right now, we're in the process of emptying the aeration tanks. We're on our first paint. I think we're four, four days right now, still on the first paint. One more day tomorrow, we should have the first paint emptied. So we can get those diffusers replaced. We need to order a couple air inlet valves for the aeration tanks, so we can just, each aeration tank where it comes from the blowers, there's a valve, so we can adjust how much air could find blow the diffusers. We don't have any spares in the process of draining the tanks and trying to make sure we can shut everything, although the blowers won't be just running, so we can get in there and clean them out. We've gotten one that doesn't shut tight and there's no more spares down there. I did put a PO request in for them, there's, I think there's eight of those valves down there. So I put a PO request number two, one to change the one that's broken, we have, and then we have a spare one. I received a quote from Riley's, which you guys have, for seals on the front axle seal of the pickup, the warranty has expired. The quote was quite expensive, like six or seven hundred dollars. We're gonna stay with you here the same house, the price of seals in there, a little bit cheap, so. We're gonna be digging in front of, in front of the Old Harris Building, over on Elm Street, put a couple more drains, let's try to stop the water from running across, across the road where it builds up. There's one drain there that doesn't seem to handle water, so that's been marked out. We need to take some of the dirt down, the sand that's built up in the pile, it smells. But we're gonna try to get that taken care of that way this fall, if we have that paved and hopefully can hear the water problem there. That's the playground, if you want to start, I'm hoping to start in the next week or two, moving it and getting some of it set up. Also, I'd like to ask, see what you think about possibly paving a few more streets at the same time. I do have, Ken Al Street's not in very good shape. River Street, there's not a lot of houses, we get a lot of heavy sewer trucks and possibly Senior Street, I think this is last year for the contract, I think it was a three-year contract for the asphalt price and I can't see it going down in the price of fuel for the next contract, I have no idea what it'll be, but I don't think, if Rose would do, I don't think we'd use all our chips money yet.
No, it's just under twenty thousand.
So it's just a, that's a thought, if we have the time and can do it, and if we can, we can do it, if it's okay, maybe we can get a few more done, we can, other spots that are.
Can you measure and estimate?
He can.
Each, each street because we can stay within the budget?
Yeah, what he'll do is if I, when he does come up, I might, he's gonna, he's got it all calculated, he's gonna computer write the truck, drive it down the road, he can tell us how many tons it would take to do it, to give us some of that soil. Yeah, so that's, I mean, it's just something I want to throw out there, if, you know, if we can do it, great, if we can't, no.
I know we still got money left in the.
I don't know, you know, I don't know what it's gonna be next year.
Yeah.
Got some thank yous too. I want to say thank you to some people who helped us out. First, I'd like to thank Alan Racine, the town of Shank Lane, the gravel supplied us. I'd like to thank Brian Pelkey, the village of Ross's Point, the shared services they provide us in time of need. I'd like to thank the DPW crew, Woody, Jimmy, Robert, and our temporary worker, Chris. We've all been doing a great job and getting a lot accomplished. The people definitely make a difference in the village, keep up the good work. I also want to thank Anita and Donna, I want to wish Donna well in her path to retirement and all the board members and Mayor Martin for the help that has needed to keep this village running. And one last thank you to the village residents for their words and encouragement, letting us know the job's well done and for not dissolving the village and giving you a chance to try to make a difference. I want to thank you all.
Any other questions for Mike?
I have one comment, I just want to thank you for, the park looked beautiful in that concert. It really looked nice, people were so impressed, thanks for the work, Tracy.
Mike, as you get closer to nailing a date for the playground, because there are a lot of people that want to be involved, so I really want the press to do another article, you know, with some dates. So as soon as you can, take a look at your calendar, seriously, give it some.
It's in your pocket.
Because a lot of people, we need to do a weekend too, you know, for a lot of the volunteers, or if we can do some nights, you know, after work hours, it'd be great. But there are also maybe people during the day that are available. But we need to get that out.
I'd say right now you're looking at, especially with the sewer plant, as much work that we have there, I'd say, and the digging we gotta do this week, you're probably looking at these couple of weeks.
Right, because you've got the other side still to do.
Yeah, we gotta get this, we gotta get this one side done, get all the diffusers changed, get it up and running, make sure, you know, get it run properly, then switch it back on the other side. But I'd say just emptying those tanks, we've got probably another, it's probably gonna be a couple of weeks, it's been a, you know, emptying those three tanks and changing the cleaners. The diffusers aren't gonna be that bad to change, it's just a salvage or a few, a bit of shovel. You're just gonna do a little vacuum wash, you're gonna add water to them because they're so thick, you can't even.
We need to get one side done, make sure, we have to, make sure we do the second side.
And that's the thing, the valves, the valves, we can adjust, we have to change the whole set, the whole tank for it. We don't have to change the whole side, we gotta change the whole, you know, once you get emptied, because you can't mix and match, your diffusers are old and stretched and they're in there and you can't just add ones here and there because they won't grow at the same ratio. They all have to be done. But each tank has its own adjustable valve, so, you know, if you can get, whatever we can get done, you know, we will. I know some of the brings are used to, ones that are in there as well, and that could be, we could be losing hair there too. I'm hoping in a few weeks, it depends on Morrisonville too, they're coming tomorrow and I don't think they're coming again next week, because they've got a lot of big jobs.
Putting the business behind schedule.
Yeah, so tomorrow, I'm hoping if we can really get in there and get to where we can have the, that tank emptied tomorrow, if we can get that tank emptied, the rest of it then. tank emptied tomorrow, if we can get that tank emptied, the rest of it, then we can get the diffusers, it won't take as long, you know, to get the diffusers back in, then we can start either like in that tank, because they all have slides, or they separate. But that tank we're doing now is the, is one that we, everything gets dumped into that one tank. There's, all three tanks are supposed to have valves that you can dump into them, the other ones are all seized, they've been like that. Actually, I might just skip that right of course, but there's a few valves we're going to need, the bigger, more expensive valves, I'm going to try to get it for next month's report, get prices, research them. This way here, we know what they are, but they're like a six-inch, six-inch valve, and
Big deal, probably.
That's what they are, but each one has its own, you can, you can separate which tank you want to dump into. Everything is dumped in the same tank, and that's why there's so much solid in that tank, the other two are seized, closed, and nobody ever changing them, or so if we have a problem with that one tank, that whole side is out of commission, you know, because you can't dump neither of the tank, you can't divide them off and dump into them. So we need to look at getting, getting it fixed. Even if we can do one, you know, or we can use two tanks. But I think there's four of them that are bad. There are only two that are working, so it's...
Thank you for taking care of all these things, so what was that?
Little more than half.
Okay, could we, before we do one of the correspondence, could we back up here just a little bit and look at these purchase orders? The one with the turn recorder, I'd like to table until we get some clarification from the engineers. The one with Riley Ford, in order six thirty-three fifty-four. I think Mike mentioned that he's going to attach it to save us somebody. The purchase order request. The valves for the area near U S A Blue Book, a hundred and sixty-two dollars, maybe five cents a piece, and it's two, make sure you go through this operation.
Yes, one of them needs to change, we'll have one spare, there's eight there, so we'll have a spare to, we need it, or another one, I won't know until the other side, I didn't shut them off. So once we get over to the other side of the land, we need to order another one later, and we can, but for now...
You'd be better to order three or four now?
I think, I think two will be all right for now, we've got one to change, I have one that, I do have one that we're going to take out that's leaking, not leaking badly, but it's leaking. But we can always keep that for spare, we'll probably take apart and see if it's just not seated right, or, but I have nothing to replace it, I can't take it out without having to look at it.
In the chimney?
Yeah, I'm going to call tomorrow and see if we can get a quote on metal vessels, see the differences versus fixing.
From Bayside?
Yes, I'll call him, and then I can get one, everybody does, there's a lot of people that do. So we can get a few quotes for that, it's just a lot part of it, a lot of we don't do.
Right, but if we, if we want somebody else with the metal vessels, would we still need Bayside with the panel that's there, or would we build it there?
No, the site is taking it down. We can take it down.
Okay.
The only thing is, I need to get moved on this because I'd like to have done before this, it doesn't take long, one day it's up. That's the nice thing about metal vessels versus block, Jimmy, they can only, they're building at the bottom up, they can only go through the course, they can't accept. Metal vessels don't take that long.
Well, we've got pricing, we have interviews, so we'll be meeting any way we can do a quick vote on it.
More and more, it makes it all right off.
So I guess, back to the purchase orders, we need a motion to approve. Do you need purchase of two blood style gear operation? Got a second? Any other discussion in this? A rule call please.
Trusty Tronbligh, aye. Trusty Fethrich, aye. Trusty Tronbligh, aye. Trusty Gear, aye. Mayor Martin?
Aye. Down at the bottom on E, this is account G eighty-one thirty point two. Four in parentheses.
Yeah, that's the subcode.
This correspondence, please.
Thank you, letters, Brian Pelkey, Bill at Rosas Point, for the help of their men and equipment in preparing roads for paving. Letters to Karen Briat regarding village noise ordinance. Correspondent and deputy, Colonel Donna Barcom, announcing her retirement Saturday, August thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Letter to John Canoza, Cleveland County Health Department, regarding low water pressure issue on Prospect Street. Notice violation to purchase the barge regarding grass cutting. Correspondence from Cleveland County Health Department regarding a bill that prohibits smoking at playgrounds. Correspondence from Congressman Bill Olens, regarding the St. Lawrence psychiatric center. Correspondence from Isabella Aubrey, regarding the water sewer bill persistent to Church Street. Resolution of congratulations to Joshua Robert Prunier on achieving status of Eagle Scout. Invitation to Joshua Prunier to attend the annual, to attend the August board meeting to receive his recognition award for achieving Eagle Scout status. Notice violation to the story in interiors, composed out of Tatro regarding their fire pond. Letter to Paul Manus, regarding thirty Meadow Lane and possible need for area variance. J C E O monthly report. Correspondence from Assembly Member Mark Butler, regarding receipt of the village resolution, closed closure of St. Lawrence psychiatric center. Thank you, letter from Assembly Member Janet Dupree, for the village resolution, opposing closure or reduction of services of St. Lawrence psychiatric center. Firm of lost claims report. Thank you, letter to Kathy Coates, for organizing the music and car concert. Correspondence from Ken Delafrance, regarding his future plans for his property located at twenty-nine Seder Street. Correspondence, correspondence from Ken Delafrance, expressing his opinion regarding local law number one. Letter to Randy Coria, composed out of Tatro, regarding possible zoning violation of his property located at ninety-seven Elm Street. Correspondence from Janet Dupree, regarding invitation to attend dedication ceremony honoring the guy number one.
Any comments on the correspondence?
I do have a question, Mike, on Ms. Aubrey's water, did we find out what the issue was?
I really don't know what it was, I have feeling that's either water that was hung up, or something like this, that, you know, when they tried to flush it, it probably got it closed. They didn't have any leaks.
Have you done a reading since to see if it's still calculating at that high rate?
No, I went over and read it, and somebody had read it just before that, she had somebody come and look at it as well. She looked at the reader outside, Kristen Peshpat.
Kristen, what did you read it as though?
Yes, but she didn't put it out, she's, she had somebody come and look at it, and then I read it and told her that she had used in that short period of time, it was, reading was fine. The only thing I could see is something was hung up, and just running, running, probably didn't, whoever it was, or whatever, probably doesn't even realize it, it was like that. If they didn't see it, you know, they had somebody come and check all their plumbing, and check their toilets, and everything was fine at that time. I just had a feeling that maybe the lap or something was hung up, and even if somebody tried to flush it, probably closed. There's no, there's no, hasn't been anything wrong with the meter, it's made meter required, so that's my assumption.
Will you just do another check on it in a couple of weeks, just to make sure for her? She herself can't go down physically to check on that, so...
No, I can read it actually right outside.
That'd be great.
Check what it was, it was very loud, so, I mean, just reading back the way it should be. Like I said, that's the only thing I can possibly think of, is something was stuck on, and water was running through, and maybe they never realized it or found it, but act seven to fix it, they don't even know.
Any else on the correspondence?
Question from Mike on Randy's property, what's, what's he running there, what is it?
He talked to me earlier in the year about a potential membership club, and I told him before he did anything, he'd have to, it's, he has to have approval from the zoning board. Apparently, he went ahead and leased the property, but membership club, motorcycle club, from what I gather, and hasn't come through the zoning board yet, that's why he's sending the letter.
Have I heard him saying that this club is, is law enforcement people?
I'm not sure, all I heard was motorcycle club.
No, I thought it was a, a goodwill group that...
Like a fundraiser?
No, he didn't tell me what, he just said a motorcycle club, I just...
So they're meeting there now?
I guess.
So they don't have to cease and desist till this is approved?
Not really, no, as long as he applies, it's like a, a stay of execution, if you will, until there's a decision made.
Has he applied?
Not yet. I just sent the letter last week.
Right, so if he hasn't applied, then he's already doing it, how can we allow it?
Or how can we stop it?
Well, I mean, I, I could stop it, but it would be the first time I've ever done that to anybody. I mean, somebody is out of compliance for a zoning issue, you send them a letter, as long as they comply by applying, you know, you let the zoning board do its thing. If they don't apply, well then, yeah, it would be a violation, you know, you're going from there.
Do you have a little time, you want to know how, to when he has to apply?
I usually put in there, you gotta respond immediately, or wordy to that effect.
Should we on your...
The only thing is, though, I want to tell you right now, a membership club is a membership club, zoning doesn't define what it can or can't be. You know, it's an allowed juice in that particular zone, you know, by virtue of zoning board approval. So this might be a difficult one, depending on opposition and so on and so forth.
With any of your correspondences, Mike, can we put a date instead of respond immediately? If you want immediately, can you give them a seven-day window, or some specific?
If I do that, I have to go thirty days.
Well, then we need to put something specific, because for some people, immediate may be, okay, I'll get to it in a couple of months.
Well, I find that, well, if immediate goes past ten or fifteen days, then I jog their memory again. But if I put a, if I have to put a date down, according to what the judges and the legal system told me, I gotta put thirty days. So if I put immediate, I tend to get swifter action. That's the reason why I do that.
Do you have a second? Any old business before the board? Any new business, the new board policy, wastewater credit, I hope that you've got a chance to look at this revised edition. Are you all happy with this?
I'm trying to get to it.
Are we doing credit or personal policy?
Wastewater credits. We'll do the, do the personal policy.
Do you need a motion to discuss?
No, yeah, if it's going to be a policy, do you need most review for?
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve this Old Shamplane Board Policy for Wastewater Credits.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, then we can discuss.
The question that I have on there is, is, should it be stated in here? So that it's very clear to anybody who looks at this? My understanding is that there's a specific amount of water that needs to be used, and if you're under that amount of water, you don't get the credit, because I've, I've been approached by a village resident regarding this, because they received a letter. So I think if we're going to stand by that kind of ruling, that it really should be stated in here. Yes.
A vaguely, I mean, I'll call it, a vaguely, there's something about a five thousand gallon.
Yeah, per pool.
Per pool, but I think if we look at it now, with what
Right.
What it has, this gives us an accurate figure of what's going in the pool, so we can charge, and as I, I think I put down in the bottom, four C, water used to fill a pool, we charge per thousand gallons used, to calculate an exact amount, the amount due will be calculated and charged to the nearest thousand gallons being, or used to fill the pool. So we're charged for what's actually being used.
So that five thousand limit doesn't apply anymore? The reason it did is, the, the meter that's in the home doesn't have the accuracy this has.
Well, here, if they fill their pool for five days, everything you're using in the house, we have to treat, washing, the toilets and tubs, we still have to treat that. This way here, it's pool only. Everything they use in the house, still goes through the regular, you know, it's going to go through the regular meter, this they put outside, garden hose in, garden hose out, they fill a pool, and it's more capital credit for just what they put through this meter, if they don't put it through this meter, there's no credit there.
So because we're using the house meter before, we have to have a
Buffer.
A factor, so, because it's all the water goes in a drain, other than just the hose, so it's kind of a reserve.
I think we'll read both meters anyway.
Right.
We'll read the house meter before we start, and we can read that after, and do a comparison about what's being used through the house meter.
That's a good idea, so in your log, have, have hope these and that.
We need to make a couple more up, I've got feelings, we'll make a couple more up, and we'll just do a log book for each one, and
Yeah, because when it comes to filling pools, time, it's, everybody's filling their pool, and it does take two to three days to fill it. That's great.
We've got enough of these that
Mary?
The only comment, you know, I think all the chains that we put in here, I think it's very accurate, very concise. If we put this in a place, we approve this and put it in a place, I'd like to look at some of the
Act decision?
Yeah, the decisions that we made prior to this.
Make it retroactive?
Make it retroactive, and case by case, I think there's some that are clear, that we ran on the ground, and you can clearly prove that, you know, it didn't go down in the wastewater drain.
You want to set the limit on how far back we're going to go with this? We were provided with examples of, a couple of cases where it just ran out on the ground, and a couple of cases where it was effectively going into the system.
With your total four decisions.
And those, and those were two.
Two would require credit, and two would not.
Right. So instead of the timeline, you know, how can we do that?
How far back are we going to go to, to consider repaying?
Re, reimbursing?
Yeah, reimbursing.
How far back with those, remind me?
That's something to find out.
Two years.
I think, I think two years.
Maybe you could say two years. But we got to make sure.
Because prior to that, it wasn't, I'm, I'm almost positive the last, when you guys pulled them?
That was two thousand twelve, for months ago, yeah.
The oldest was?
April second, two thousand twelve.
It wasn't a lot, but it wasn't there?
August, or October fourteenth. Two thousand twelve. July eighth, two thousand thirteen. February eighth, two thousand twelve. This was something in through a water suck. This water's in the sea.
So this is going back to January, it's still in trouble, it's worth having.
Two thousand twelve.
So you could say two years.
Yeah, we're going to have it.
Right.
So what's the board's pleasure?
Either work, either go back, you know, the two year, or just retro it to January versus two thousand twelve. That comes down to the top, right?
What's this one here, or for October?
Same stuff, it was in eleven.
Yeah, there is one, October fifteenth.
Yeah.
It's, like, fourteen, the last, I'm not sure what the criteria is, but
It was a few hours.
It's a trailer.
It was a trailer.
You say two years, it's a couple of years.
They were giving a credit.
They were giving a credit?
They were giving a credit.
Oh, right. So that was the last of the ambiguity.
Yep, it was.
So, Tom, you want to change your motion to ream where you did?
Yeah, I guess we go with January 2012. We will look at these cases back to January 2012 and reimburse accordingly, if they fit the criteria we're seeing. Always.
Okay. Back January 12th, 2000, January 2012, for possibilities of reimbursement. Any other changes you'd like? Amy?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Amy? One call please.
Trustee Tremblay, aye. Trustee Petroch, aye. Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett, aye. Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Okay, we have that. All right. The one that you have before you is a reimbursement request from Kenneth Plant, that we gave him until this meeting. Majority of the water used ran outside, not into the water sewer system. I was hoping to move back to the middle of the projection estimate, water usage ran outside. I think I worked up an estimate of sewer judgment credit P four three seven zero. Received a letter attached from Kenneth Plant Jr. for property one thirteen, now requesting a credit. Water wastewater bill, if I'm not mistaken, that was running, filling a pool. It was left on approximately ten to fourteen days. BBW crew found what was calculated on July 1st, about thirteen water billing. Large increase, notified superintendent of electric. Pose is still on a report for the pool, the pool breakdown on this account. Should the board approve the sewer request? Average of last three billings, three thousand gallons, amount used on seven one thirteen bill, hundred and sixty eight thousand, which is a difference of one six hundred and sixty five thousand. Sewer credit, that amount, six dollars a thousand, is nine hundred and ninety dollars.
And to make it clear, there was not an actual charge to the village for sewer, because it did not go into the sewer. In no way are we absorbing anything here.
Right, so, so if you go to the, go to the next page, average last four readings, three thousand gallons. On the July 1st, hundred and sixty eight thousand, so the average hundred and sixty five thousand gallons is the overage. Amount charged for sewer, one thousand forty five dollars and fifty cents. The proposed credit, nine ninety, actual sewer balance, fifty five fifty.
The only thing I have, thinking of this, is I know we take the average. Yeah, just kind of thinking, sorry, I'm showing up, skip it.
That's what we can do.
Yep.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve this wastewater credit, again, based on meeting the criteria of this policy.
One second.
I second that.
Do you want the amount?
For the amount of nine hundred and ninety dollars?
Okay, just a second. Ready, any other discussion here?
No, I just want, like, I reiterate what Amy said, this is based on, this is a proven fact, this water did not enter the wastewater. We didn't spend any money to treat it.
And it's purely a credit for sewer, and he's paying for his water in full.
Yes. For one hundred and sixty five dollars.
Okay, one call please.
Trustee Tremblay, aye. Trustee Petroch, aye. Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett, aye. Mayor Martin?
Aye. Let's take a moment, look at the new personnel policy, please. Need to, uh, again, you notice the, as you come through here, the notations in red are additions, the notations in green are relations. Thank you, Kim, for listening. As I went through, there's a couple things that, I guess, brought up a couple questions in my mind, and I'm sure you had yours as well. On page six, with the longevity, I'm sure this is, this is an either or here. Either the top or the bottom one. We have in the past not included this in the personnel policy. If I recall, this was part of the labor negotiations, was not part of the personnel policy, correctly, by the law.
You're wrong. Well, it wasn't part of the personnel policy, but we had started longevity before there was a union. And that's what I think is the ten cents an hour, if I recall correctly.
Okay, so it's the bottom part that we're considering?
I don't, Kim and I never got together, I was waiting for a time we could coordinate a time, so I'm not sure, that was my question. Red, are your suggestions, is that what that is?
I put both of them in, because I didn't know what the board's pleasure would be, and then you had both options in front of you, instead of flipping back and forth between the union contract and the personnel contract. In my opinion, if we're giving something to the employees, it should be in here. And I didn't know which way you wanted to go with it, so they both got put in. I asked Donna if you needed to do that. And then you had both options in front of you. Should you choose not to have it in there, I'm fine with that too. But if we're giving employees something, it should be clearly stated and spelled out in there. As it is with other things in here.
So, so the one on the top is, is what we have in our union contract for our union employees?
Yes.
Yes.
And the one at the bottom is what we've been following for our non-union employees?
Correct.
So should you just put both of them in and state it that way?
I'm fine with that.
Well, the one that's, the top one is already in the union.
It's in the union contract, we're just separate anyway. They don't, the union doesn't follow our personnel policy, anyway.
So we're gonna leave the second part in?
Yeah.
Fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, makes sense, that's true.
Okay, so the limit first on top, longevity will, and keep the bottom part there. It works out about the same anyway.
Keep the second part in.
Is it needed, even be stated, that's for non-union?
No. Yeah, my second question was, uh, was in page fifteen. I wrote this down, and I looked at it green, and the ones that's supposed to be deleted. With the back braces? I love it, it's thirteen. With the back braces, I think they've been proven.
To not be effective.
Not to be effective, I think we talked about this in here to the goal.
Yes, that's why I think it should be taken out.
Okay. All right.
We used to page fifteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Oh, sounds like-
Top, top paragraph.
It's in green, so it could have been deleted anyway, up on quarter. And that's where the, the increased amount, increased a lot of amount for boots. And the last time I went boot shopping, I couldn't find a pair of boots that were in that price range, for a hundred and fifty. But that was part of the union negotiations. On page, another one here, on page seventeen.
Well, while you're on that with the boots, and it does say the employees to leave them on the premises, that is not occurring. So boots should be removed at the end of shift and left in the walkers. To help on the wear and tear of them.
Can we pass that on? They get ten minutes in the morning, you get dressed ten minutes, in the afternoon to change your shoes and stuff, so. Okay, thank you.
What was the next one, or seventeen?
Page seventeen.
I don't want to change that one.
No, but I just, I penciled this just for you. On page seventeen, under the section of reviews.
Yeah, let's start with them.
We need to come up with a form.
Yes.
Yeah, for annual review of the, of the employees. So maybe Juanita, I can find one here that'll work, and we'll bring it back to the employee. Okay, any other discussion on this, I know it's a lot, all the ones.
I would say under there too, under the reviews, is that the superintendent of public works will be responsible for reviewing.
His employees.
Okay, and then who is going to review office staff? So Juanita would do the review for the clerk, and who does Juanita's review? You?
Either I or the board.
So that would need to be stated in there, I think, would be a good idea to add.
BBW Mike? I will do Juanita's hand mics. Is that right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, I forgot about you, Mike. And then Juanita would do. Her, not people's names, obviously, the big titles would be the-
The deputy clerk.
Yes, the deputy clerk. The deputy treasurer, what are you, deputy dog, what do you call?
Me, I'm clerk treasurer.
Clerk treasurer will do the deputy clerks. So by title.
The only other suggestion that I had for this, is if in the future we want to make changes, is if possibly taking it and aligning it, because we can change this, we cannot change the union contract. If we align this, so that things flow more similar to the union contract. So if you want to go and look at it, you're not flipping through twenty-five pages trying to find something.
Is there that many drastic differences between the two, do you think?
No, but it's just-
It's the order she's saying.
The order.
Okay.
I would just say that-
That makes sense.
If, I found it very difficult trying to go through it, because there is no, there's more of a flow to the union contract than there is to the personnel contract, I think. So it was a little difficult. So for the next review of this, it might be easier if it just sort of flowed more the way the union contract was.
Just change order.
Yeah. And it, it wouldn't be that hard to cut and paste, yeah, not that kind of cut and paste, the other kind.
Motion to approve personnel policy?
No, I have some questions.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, sorry. And I apologize that we have not been able to connect, so. Page, and of course, this is only for the union, but one thing I want us to keep in the back of our minds is, you know, where they're talking Sundays is double time. That was back in the day of blue laws, and we are so past blue laws now, that, you know, I think time and a half is an adequate amount as opposed to double time on a Sunday, when, pitch five. When, you know, now work weeks are Monday through Sunday. They're not really distinguishing, before Sundays, everything was closed down, and that was an exception to the rule for folks who had to work on Sundays, but just something to keep in the back of our heads. I know we can't do anything now, because we have a union contract, but that was surprising. Page eight, where we talk on the vacation carryover time. Minimum vacation request for half day below. Employees may request approval from the board to carry over unused vacation. Do we want to stipulate the amount of unused vacation when we carry over? Or do we want to visit the option, instead of being hit when people leave with, you know, a huge payout for vacation? Do we want to put it in place at, say, December 1st of the year, or whatever, wherever you want to do it, that we give a payout of unused vacation time? Because maybe some people, they would assume, just soon take that, as opposed to taking the time off, if they weren't able to schedule it due to unproceeded circumstances. So that we don't run into a problem of getting jammed up in critical times, when he needs his employees, but they have all this accrued vacation time to use. We're still paying them for it, because they're gonna take that time off no matter what. So is this something that we should visit to, you know, possibly put that in there? I mean, obviously, it's not, people can refuse to take their vacation when they just want to get a payout in December. You know, it is in circumstances where we are getting, you know, a lot of accrued time.
But somewhere's a way to address this, and try to keep this to a minimum.
Right, but we're not specifying here, so we're gray, right. But we did, we carry it over. Nobody's ever, we've never had an issue. Nobody's ever gotten paid for their vacation. No, right, but every year, we're carrying over vacation time, is what I'm seeing.
Well, we, we talked about-
The last public employee, the last BBW worker that left here, wasn't he paid for a vacation pay?
That was because he left in the employment, what he had left on the books. But that's, we're talking about just regular workers. I mean, anybody that left the employment would expect to be paid for whatever time they have on the books, but-
Personnel policy-
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we've got this accrual, and we're, we're, you know, carrying over, every year, we approve a carryover vacation, and we did again this year. Up till December 31st. Right. But then that runs into a complication in scheduling. You know, what if, what if Mike runs into a position that we lose a worker, and he can't honor giving vacation time? You know, so I think that we need to be more specific as to what we're going to, to do with vacation.
I think we shouldn't allow carryovers unless, under a certain circumstance, if we just pointed out.
Right, but we're carrying over every year.
I know, we need to stop doing it, we talked about this before.
So that's what I'm saying, we need to be specific here, because all it says is employees may request approval from the board to carry over unused vacation. Then you should have a lot of the common days you can carry over. Right. Or not carry it over.
Well, then, but the only problem with that, Amy, is now you've got people that, due to schedules in the office, can't take their vacation, so now you're going to punish them by saying, you've got vacation time, but you can't take it, and we're not gonna pay you for it, and you can't carry it over. You know, you can't-
Well, see, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking to punish anyone or deny them their vacation time. You have a year to plan your vacation time, and to take it or not. But there are circumstances that come up, and as opposed to this carryover, and then we get jammed up in the, you know, that period between June and December, and a quick pack it in there, you know. We're paying them anyway, so if they take time off, they're getting paid to be off. But, you know, it's just, it's a thought. I mean, this is what some businesses are moving to, and when you get jam ups on vacation, that you're not able to, to get it. I mean, obviously, the ideal is take your vacation, everyone needs vacation, they need that accrued time. I'm not looking to take anything away from anybody, I'm looking to become more specific in this policy and procedure manual that can be very vague. Thing is, we've never, we have never paid somebody to work and get paid for their vacation, because it's actually not in the budget.
Did we have power to approve or disapprove vacation that night?
Right, so all I'm saying is, that was just a random throw out there, because that is what's happening.
Well, I think, I think that statement says-
Otherwise, we need to specifically say that there is no carryover for vacation time. Unless extenuating circumstances.
Which is really what, that doesn't say it strongly, but it says the board has to approve it.
Yeah.
And we need, we need to see to enforce it more, that, you know, we don't allow carryovers unless it's extenuating, and Mike tells us, look, if, if I couldn't take vacation, I had to have one.
That's true, let's put something in there.
But then their sick time, they never lose their sick time, that can always be carryover, now that's a lot of- But only up to ninety days, they can carry over. That's a long time. Yeah, but, I mean, there is a limit to it, you know. I mean, long-term employees can accrue or make a load of sick time, if they're not, they don't take sick time.
The next is maybe. The next is maybe...
Taking an accrual up to ninety days?
That's still a lot of time, yeah, that's still a lot of time, yeah.
Now that, you know, a lot of places, I'm going to make this, do you pay that off in the year, to book them?
We have different amounts on that ninety day thing, too.
Does the board want any answer?
On page eight, very top. Employees may request approval from the board to carry over unused vacation time. Under extenuating circumstances, some, I don't know. I mean, how do we make it clear that, you know, vacations are to be done by May thirty-first?
Vacations, vacation days should be used by December thirty-first, under extenuating circumstances?
Maybe carry over only under extenuating circumstances.
Because our year starts June first, so it's got to be done by May thirty-first.
Correct. Vacations, vacation days need to be used by May thirty-first?
Then you don't have any carryover, because your new year starts January.
Trying to come up with a wording.
You could put, add that sentence in there, Greg, and then just say, "Employees may request approval from the board to carry over unused vacation time under..."
Do you want to set a limit on days that are carried over?
Well, I don't want them to lose any time.
No, I don't think I should set...
You know, and that's the thing, I don't want them to lose it, but I, I, I maybe keep that in mind, the scheduling of vacation, right, yeah, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, it just, we need to add this in.
Well, I mean, you're always... You're always going to have the extenuating circumstances, you take somebody who gets very ill and is out because of an illness, and they end up being out for quite a while, they're not going to be taking vacation time. So they're going to end up, very possibly, with vacation time and, I mean...
Yeah, but when they're out over a certain number of days, they're not accruing any vacation time anyway.
But if they haven't taken any, they're still going to have what they had on the books, that's what I'm saying, you're always going to have a circumstance where something like this can happen.
Well, what we, how about if we put, "The expectation is that employees will take their vacation time within that year."
That's good.
How's that?
Yeah, that's good.
The expectation...
Should be used by the end of the fiscal year, May thirty-first?
Yes. And then, Mike, just keep that in mind, is that employees are putting in their request and, and putting in there, that they really need to keep that in mind, it's not bank it and, you know, use it all and follow.
Okay, so how are we...
The expectation is that the employees will use their vacation time within the fiscal year.
Is there a completion, it's not January or December?
No.
No.
First, make their first.
Do you assume we give us until December thirty-first for first?
That was when they carry over.
You give them, you give them six months to...
That's the carryover.
Use their carryover.
Okay?
Yep.
And we can still leave that sentence in there, employees may request...
Yeah, and we just need to be more diligent, that it's got to be extenuated, that's got to be a really good reason why they have to carry it over. And when we do that, we probably need to put a limit on the SBU.
Well, we do put a limit on that.
Yeah, maybe we could, you want to put a shorter limit again?
Has it, has it, that a problem?
Yeah, it's carryover for the year.
It started about three years ago, and usually one now, and everybody's using their vacation from last year, whatever they had left over.
Okay.
The only time you don't miss you is a part of the year where seniority gets the first, when somebody wanted to go, they have to leave. Do a limited crew, and makes it tough to go with somebody else. I mean, I've had a few that had two off, but, you know, one of them obviously said, it was only fifteen minutes away, I've been having some emergency, whatever, calling, you know. Under those conditions, you can have it.
Yeah.
And we, and we don't have a problem. Try to schedule around things, you know, we had one of them taking vacation, if everyone's taking that time, I'll wait. You know, ended up, don't worry about it, when the time came, if the payment was done, then we still needed to pay, so, it's been for a small group, it's been very, very good.
Okay, my next question is page ten. And I know I mentioned this, the last board meeting, and I know it got a little heated, and I apologize. Do we want to look at the employee contribution to insurance? And do we really want to leave that as a, as only a ten percent contribution?
Uh, it's really difficult, uh...
Isn't that, that's not a contract thing?
No.
Not with the salary?
No, the salary people. And with us looking to hire a new person, you know, we need to look at that. I know when Juanita came in, it, you know, Juanita started with a percentage, you know, before that, there wasn't. So, do we, you know, want to look at that with a new employee coming on with a more realistic, um, percentage contribution?
Are you suggesting they re-tier this, within different tiers?
Well, I'm thinking that it has to be adjusted somehow.
Well, the new employee will be a tier-six employee.
Yeah.
They have a different contribution than the new employee.
Up to, you know, it's up to forty-five thousand, it's just three percent to further retirement, that's to say that, that they contribute...
But they have to work longer.
They contribute for the entire, um, employment. It doesn't stop, yeah, it doesn't stop after ten years.
It was implied, were you questioning it?
No.
Uh, I don't, I'm not sure what you're looking for, you're looking to change the amount?
The, the percent is low.
Yeah, the percent is low, the percent is very low by these standards today, and that's just a fact. And, and we can't really expect the taxpayers to keep, um, shouldering the change. I mean, because as the rate, you know, it, it goes up, you know, it's an added bonus for the employee of, you know, about sixteen thousand dollars, you know, in, with the insurance. So, I, I think that's, it's, it's way too low, in, in my opinion. So... Well, I'd disagree, I don't know what it should be.
Well, with the union employees, I know we, uh, we raised, I think significantly, this, this union contract. But there was also the thought in the back of the mind, that if I was, if I was an employee, I would not go for a contract that I was not going to at least take somebody home extra. If you're going to charge me more for insurance, then I want to at least... I want to at least hit a level of pay, I don't want to lose my, my, my paycheck.
Well, everyone would like that.
I just thought that was a reasonable explanation that, that we had when we negotiated.
No, that makes sense, but I think she's talking about the new employee that we're coming in.
Right.
Well, then you, then you make a tier system, if you're going to, if you're going to keep two salary employees at one level and a new employee at a different level.
Well, you say effective, whatever, August first of two thousand thirteen, you know, if you're hired after that date, your rate, um, will change, but, you know, to, to stay at a, a, a ten percent, it's not happening out there in the real world. It's, it's not, you're not getting pay increases in, you know, maintaining your amount to your insurance. It's just not happening.
Greg, we had that as, as teachers, where the new employees were coming in at a different health insurance payment, you know, I mean...
That's what I'm going to do, too.
Yeah.
The new hires are paying where the older hires...
Because of our contract, not because of our tier.
Yes.
Yes, so it's not really that unusual. I mean, I don't think you want to jump it up to, you know, a huge, a huge change, but ten percent is, seems kind of low, I don't know.
Well, that's your suggestion. I hope we do that. About a half, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent of the new hires? So we'll agree with that?
I don't know, I, I think, I think we just pull numbers, but...
Well, we can do some research.
I would feel better doing some research, because I don't know what you're going on.
Can't touch the union guys, because they have a fixed amount, right.
You're talking about health insurance here?
Yeah.
At the town, I pay fifteen percent, the union pays eighteen. I think Ralph's point is more in line with what you were at, ten percent, but they were looking to increase it, so...
So fifteen is out there.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I pay for my health insurance.
I pay twenty, the house pays thirty.
I don't know what I pay for, this isn't a divorce, I don't have to pay, it's not based on percentage, it is, I don't know what it is.
So we can look into coming up with a, a rate, what do you want to compare?
We're going to find a reason.
So I say, what do you want, what do you want to compare to?
Can we look at other municipalities here?
There are other municipalities, let's see, in a comparable setting.
Okay, the only thing I'm going to say to that is, um, if you're going to look at comparable, uh, comparable contributions, you need to be looking at comparable salaries.
Yeah, you have, yeah, definitely.
That was brought up in negotiations, repeatedly, where...
But that comes back to that fact of, you can't charge people more for their, for their insurance, not give them a decent raise, and they lose money, because you will not get employees who will stay.
And that, and what we negotiated as a, as a contribution from our employees, what the town is contributing, contributing, but you also got to remember that the town, the basic town DPW employee is making about four dollars more out.
Then what are we going to do? Yes. Yes, and you just, you can't, you can't...
If you make more, you pay more in contribution.
But you can't expect that the salaries don't go up and, and expect people to pay more, they're not, they, they will not stay.
Well, we can't make a decision on this tonight, we need more information, we can't just pull a number.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm worried about, is to just grasp the number.
Yeah.
Okay, who's going to work at this one?
Juanita, would you be able to, in all of your wealth of contacts? Actually, I think, I think Juanita would be the perfect one to do that, because she knows contacts in different places. Maybe Nikon would have some sort of a reference, or...
Also, I can tell the villagers.
Nikon might have it, they have an idea, because they compare the contributions statewide.
Thank you, Juanita. You're a volunteer. Always ready to vote.
Well, halfway down that page, retirement benefits, part D?
D?
D, delta. New York State requirement requires notification between two weeks and ninety days, I'd like to change that to three months to ninety days.
What?
Wait.
That's the same thing, three months is the same as ninety days.
It isn't.
Are you trying to confuse us?
Late night here.
I am confused.
Sorry. Three months and stays, thank you. Moving on. Please.
We changed the two weeks to half a month.
Thank you.
If we, if we go back up to, um, the retirement benefits under B as in boy, um, you know, email Nikon regarding this possible limit of thirty days. There's a discrepancy where we state that they can't carry over more than ninety days, um, for sick time. And yet, this is, it's noted here, because it states thirty days here in our current policy and procedure manual.
But you asked me to compare it to the union, and that's what's got in the union, so that's why I...
Well, no, what we have in, in our policy and procedure manual under, um, I think it's later on, where it says, "Carryover time for sick time"?
Do you have a paging?
No, and I apologize for it, I just know when I saw that, that that was what I had originally highlighted. We have stated, you can only carry...
Sick time, one paging.
Thank you.
Sick time, they accumulate up to ninety days.
Right, so this is where the discrepancy is, we have six time, we can accumulate up to ninety days, but upon retirement, we're only going to pay out thirty days. So there was a discrepancy, if they can accumulate it...
They should be paid for it.
They should be paid for it. So we do need to change that to the ninety days. You see what I'm saying? Or we go back to thirty in this page eight, but we have to, whatever we say under page eight, we have to say on page ten. So whatever we choose, if they can carry over thirty sick days, and then they'll be paid for those thirty days, or are we going to allow them to carry over ninety sick days and have that big payout upon retirement? That's what we have to be aware of, is it ninety days worth of payout, are we going to be able to have that in our budget? Depending on how far along they are, that's a lot of money, plus their vacation time. So whichever we decide to do, we need to be consistent on page ten and page eight.
And in the union contract, do you allow them to carry many days, or should many, many days in each week?
And do we pay them out ninety days of sick time if they leave, if they had it accrued? Or is it limited to paying out thirty days? They can carry over ninety, but we only pay out thirty.
No, I don't believe so.
No, if they leave, they could pay for the time on the books.
Yes.
Right, but the way it's stated right now, they can accrue ninety, but we're only going to pay them for thirty, accruing to our personnel policy and procedure manual right now. So that's what I'm saying, we need to have this consistent. And realistically, you know, ninety days is a lot of money, but, um, you know, we've been doing very well with our budgets, if we want to maintain that. I'm just saying that we need to be consistent, and that was the whole point of this, is getting, um, everything to be in sync. So...
Well, for us, we could save up to a hundred eighty days, but we only pay a hundred and five.
So what do you want to do, you want to do, leave it the way it is, that you can save up to ninety, but you're only going to get paid thirty?
No, they, they need to be paid for the ninety, if they can accumulate, accumulate up to ninety, then they, they need to be paid for the ninety, if they leave, and that's what they have on the books.
Trying to get consistency, looking to policies.
Okay, so we'll keep the B at the ninety, so that means that A already has the ninety, so we're consistent.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Should we stay in three, you know, you have tier three, tier four, you added tier five and tier six. Do you just want to say tier three and up employees shall be required to pay the portion established by the New York State retirement system? Right, so we don't keep adding in the tiers as they change, because these tiers are going to keep changing.
Is there anything that says we have to have the different tier levels in there long enough?
Would that not make more sense?
Just employees shall be required to pay a portion as they, yeah, established by the New York State retirement system, just take out the tiers.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, great, that's even better, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay. You had mentioned something about fraternity leave, do you want anything added for this?
I think that was gone.
Okay. Fraternity leave is covered under the Family Leave Act, so I think we should just leave it be, they can get it covered if they need it. Um, the meal allowance, I am definitely not for doubling breakfast of ten dollars, lunch of fourteen, dinner of twenty-four dollars, I mean, that's pretty pricey meals.
That was part of the negotiations with the union, so, I really couldn't, I don't, I don't know where you can get breakfast for five dollars, or lunch for seven.
Well, most of your breakfast is... Well, most of your breakfasts are included when you're in hotels anyway nowadays.
No, not always.
I mean, ten dollars for breakfast, and it's ten dollars.
Twenty dollars can cost you at least six or seven dollars just for-
Well, I think that there should be an increase, but we're doubling. We're going from five to ten, seven to fourteen, twelve to twenty-four.
I don't have a problem with the increases.
How often do we pay a meal?
I was just gonna say that.
Exactly.
I am.
That's forty-six dollars a day for food.
I don't remember.
The only time we pay them for any meals is when we cut the guys over the overtime, and we cut the pizza or something, or something, because we kept them here, do a water being break or something like that.
I'm, I'm-
I think it's pretty rare occasion, like I said, I'm in River.
Well, right, but it, under that occasion that we do, it's, it's there, and that's forty-six dollars per person, per day for food. That's a lot of money, guys.
It is, but I think it's reasonable. Go ahead and look at, how much are you charging in restaurants today? We don't pay it all that often.
I don't feel it's based on, but I, it's never gonna be a use of, you don't really use it.
Cause we're serving food.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Um, the rest period that we have here, um, in the, on page fifteen. We specified it in the old personnel policy and procedure manual, because the DPW crew decided they wanted to put their fifteen minute breaks with their lunch break. But the office staff does not adhere to that, and so I don't think that we should be specifying that for them, because we are requiring the office to remain open.
Yeah, but we take, we take an hour lunch.
Exactly, you should be able to take an hour lunch. But what I'm saying here is that both of you should be going between, you only have the time between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty, and both of you can't go if you're taking an hour lunch.
No, one takes eleven-thirty, twelve-thirty, one takes twelve-thirty, one for one.
Right, so I just, I don't want us to, you know, have an issue here that we do that, because we're making them stay open in the office. So again, you know-
Just eliminate your restaurants.
Or just say that the word says it's private too.
Eliminate the times.
Yeah, eliminate the times, exactly.
Don't be so specific.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, the crew chooses to do that.
That needs a business, you know.
Right.
We have to go out, you know, there's a lot of something, nobody has a problem with it, or we should, or switch, don't go down.
Just eliminate the times that are-
Yes, exactly.
Just leave the first sentence in.
Okay, that's good. I think that's it.
Okay, we're over the forum for news here in Pinewood. The rest of this, I think, is through the middle.
Again, I want to thank Donna and Juanita for the nice job they did on this, figuring out my hands scratching and pretty in and out. Does it very much.
Yes.
So we can make these changes, bring it back next month?
Yes.
And in that time, we'll have some, we'll have the research done on contributions.
Do we want, uh, uh, one more question, I'm sorry, I answered one question. But where we have the list of the disciplinary action, do we have employees sign these rules that they're gonna find upon hire? Do we have some form that they read through this and they, they sign it? Do they sign up on the personnel policy?
Every year.
Yeah, okay.
But we haven't given the full policy.
Yeah, that's right, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, any correspondence number? Number six, I'd like a resolution making the playground and Village Park, including River Street, a smoke-free, tobacco-free zone.
So moved.
Is that a second?
Second.
Okay, with the discussion, if you've read that letter, you'll notice that, you'll notice that, uh, County Health Department and the Eastern Edirondack Tobacco Free Network will help us with signage, as well as policy enforcement, or not enforcement, but development. Okay, follow the favors, you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have two more people that, that-
Yeah, a little second's all we're doing.
They're all under the place, just pick one.
I have two more people that have agreed to join the planning board. I'd like to wait one more month, so I can get some forms signed by them. That'll bring us up to four. Uh, we can have a quorum now. I think the planning board will be energized here shortly, I hope so. Uh, I'd like a motion to approve the spending of five hundred and one dollars and seventy-five cents for a tent table and chair rental for the Village Fest.
I make motion, I have second.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, we had kind of a bidding war. Juanita was on one phone, Donna was on the other, and we're going back and forth. Included in this is setup, which they, they initially wanted to charge us more for, as well as ten tables and a hundred chairs. And this, uh, tailor rental. And this will come out of A seventy-nine, eighty-nine point four, Village Fest. Uh, listen, we've had an approval for the Eagle Scout. We discussed the personnel changes. We looked at the water, wastewater credits. We've been requested by a member of the zoning board, and I think you've been copied with this letter, or copied with this request. It came out this morning. Okay, uh, this is from Mr. Mayor Meyer. On the, uh, on the board earlier, the board sent a letter dated July seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, in regards to Local Law Number One of two thousand thirteen. Per the zoning board's request on July tenth, enclosed, please find a copy of the legal notice and Local Law Number One of two thousand thirteen regarding definitions, definitions annual hospitals and kennels. This was what we received from Attorney Marshall. Please review this information and have any recommendations you may, may want to make, ready for the next zoning board meeting scheduled August fourteenth. Uh, this information will be passed along to the village board and Attorney Marshall for consideration. Now we get a letter from a member of the zoning board asking the village board, the village board, uh, to make some recommendations as to what we are looking for here. To me, we as a village board have asked the zoning board to sit down, look at this law, and decide what they wanted, and make their recommendations to us, rather than us making our recommendations to them. Now, I don't know if you've read this the same way, aye, read it.
Let me see what I, I-
Go read it, yep.
We came up with that definition that Mike read to us. We had that in front of us, and then the zoning board met, and they weren't, they didn't have it. Or they weren't aware of it, or they just saw it for the first time. So I think they wanted to get, have some input into that, but then they got that definition, that clarification.
The clarification came from our attorney.
Right, but I think we talked about it before they had, remember?
We got together and had a couple different variations of it, and we sort of picked one, and it was presented to the board to be forwarded to Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
And he incorporated it into the local law that you have in front of you.
And Steve Meyer was upset that they hadn't talked about it and given us information from them before that.
So what's the board's wishes in this matter?
In their meeting on-
On Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Well, they count, what, if they are given that, what we, what have been advised by our attorney is what our recommendations are, is, is what that local law that was written, we approve that. Is that what we're copying them out?
That's what we're talking about, but, but Mr. Meyer said at that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, that according to the zoning, that the zoning board had to give input to the board of trustees-
Before you could change any-
Before you could change anything. And he said that we tried to, we were going through with changes without their input.
We're trying to circumvent them.
Yes, so he wants them to have some input.
There's a section in the zoning, uh, it's a bright seal, that's, uh, where the zoning board has to have input.
Okay, so-
So can you serve on the zoning board? Who serves on the zoning? Okay, so you have that meeting this week, and-
Which is the latest?
Yeah, no reason.
So get their input, bring it to us, and then we'll come down on it, right? So what is looking for?
Because this has become such a sticky situation, and I've got a feeling going to get stickier, I would ask the zoning board for something in writing. Not just, not just verbal, only because you wouldn't want it to come back on us again.
Yeah, oh, it definitely needs to be in writing.
Yeah.
I'm not going to listen to something and try to report it back to the attorney.
Right, no, we have secretary of those meetings, right?
So they provide their, their suggestions in there, and we can review it.
Well, I think that just in the letter is, he wants to know what the village board is looking for in changing this. What do you want it to say? Do you want it to list all the animals that you'd want to exclude, or you just want to list the ones you can have, or, or why do you want to change it?
Didn't, didn't they end up seeing what we had done?
No.
They hadn't seen it at that point?
No, this is strictly a, a village board.
So they, they did-
They have all of influence, yeah.
Now they have it, I think.
They have to have what our attorney-
Well, they have a copy of the-
Local law.
The local law, yes.
Right.
Well, that's what we're looking for.
Right. But they want, well, from what I read in Steve's letter, he, he wants to know what the village board is-
Wants to achieve.
Right, I, I mean, we want to change the definition to make it clear, is what I felt the goal was.
Exactly, we are clarifying what animals are acceptable and not acceptable within the village limits.
And I thought that the new law spelled that out.
It, it does, but for whatever reason, he's asking for a clarification from the village board as to what you, what do you want.
What health, safety, and quality of life benefit should have been to the village residents. That's what he says.
I don't know that the law specifically deals with that.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it does.
What it's doing, it's changing-
I think it's calling it quality of life.
Well, it's, it's changing a couple definitions.
It's, it's just being more specific.
That is in the village code. It's adding-
I think it's clarifying what an accessory use can or cannot be.